Good evening and welcome to the Monday, April 11th meeting of the Takahoe Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please stand while we give our pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will our village clerk, Camille Salvo, please call the roll?
Trustee Giordano.
Present.
Trustee Luise.
Present.
Trustee Leo.
Present.
Trustee Alfasi.
Present.
Mayor Eklund.
I am thrilled to be here tonight. I have a couple of appointments to make tonight, and I'm going to start off with, the first appointment is the chairperson for the planning board, which is Anne Marie Charmella. This is going to be for a term of one year. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. The second appointment is for planning board member Raymond Nurenberg. That's for a term of five years. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. The next is ad hoc planning board member Eric Fang for a term of one year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. The next is chairperson of the sign and awning board, Barbara Niemanen, for a term of one year. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Then the next is sign and awning board member Claire Gorman for a term of three years. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Next is sign and awning board member Karen Campenil for a term to expire April 1, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And I have one more. It's for the sign and awning board ad hoc membership, Christopher Baez, for a term of one year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. I just want to take a second to thank all of our volunteer members. These are boards that are as significant, if not more significant than the village board, I always believe. So they give up a lot of time. They meet a couple of times a month. They have their regular monthly meeting, then they'll also have the work session. So they do a tremendous amount and are truly putting together the great fabric of our community that we have. So I want to especially thank them for all their time. We do not have any presentations tonight, and that's going to bring us to the first item of business, which is a public hearing. And tonight's public hearing is going to be on our budget. So the budget hearing for the tentative budget for fiscal year June 1, 2016 through May 31, 2017. Do I have a motion to open this public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Well, I'm going to turn this over to our deputy treasurer, Ryan Rueta. Ask him to come on up to the microphone, and he's going to give us a little summary as to where we are at with our upcoming budget work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing? So this is, on the first sheet I have for you guys is, this is the overall budget. Currently, the tentative budget is $12,220,412. As you can see, it's broken down into four categories: Personnel Services, Employee Benefits, Other, and Debt Service. The first category is Personnel Services, which entails all the salary lines, OT lines, part-time. Currently, we're at $5,719,839. The next category is Employee Benefits. That includes the MTA tax, employee retirement, Social Security, workers' comp, life insurance, unemployment insurance, and the medical insurance. Currently, we are at $3,514,806. Other, which includes materials and supplies, repairs and maintenance, utilities, outside services, and other various expenses to keep the village running. We are at $2,276,636. And finally, we are at 5.8% for Debt Service, which is $709,131,000. As you can see in the graph, 75% of our budget is for employee cost. On the next sheet, I just have a bar graph showing the departmental breakdowns. So the most expensive right now is the police one. We're at $3,392,447. Next, you can see the DPW at $1,977,577. The next category is a few bunched together, which I just entitled Administration. Oh, I'm sorry, Other, excuse me. That includes judicial, assessor, elections, municipal dues, building inspector, miscellaneous services, recreation, zoning board, and planning board. Currently, we are at $505,128. The next category I have is Administration. This is Legislative, Executive, Village Administrator, Treasurer, Village Clerk, Village Attorney, and Registrar. Currently, we are at $455,861. Our next category is Library. We are at currently $392,896. The building maintenance, which is the maintenance for the village hall, DPW, and the community center, we are currently at $249,200. And finally, IT and Supplies, which entails the telephone, website maintenance, computer software, equipment, and system support, and various supplies through the village. We are at $99,875. Any other further questions? I'm going to pass them along to David Burke, our village administrator.
Okay. Thank you very much for that presentation.
Thank you.
Fine presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. David, actually, I have a question for you. I know that once in a while, we'll get a question from some of our residents asking us about our debt service. And is our debt service high or low? And I believe that it's on the low side. I can remember one time our auditors telling us that we had a borrowing threshold maximum of some incredible limit of like $75 million, which of course, we would not borrow $75 million, but that percentage, 5.8%, can you give us some guidance as to, are we on the low end of life, or mid-range?
Yeah, the 5.8%, I think it's all relative when you look at different villages, but 5.8% is definitely in the lower range. The last time Moody's looked at our debt service and our village budget, they actually gave us, one of our positives was our low debt, and also that most of our debt is going to be coming off the books the next 10 to 15 years. So even, it is low, and it's going to come off very soon. So yeah, 5.8% is nothing to either be worried about, or I think it's a very good position to be in right now.
Well, but with that, maybe you can give us a few highlights of our budget, too?
Sure. So it is April right now, and obviously, this budget doesn't come out. It starts way back in December, where I provide a memo to the village, all the village departments asking for their village requests. And our review begins, and I say "our review," myself, Ryan, and Jim LaPercha, the Treasury Department, really instrumental in the creation of this budget. So I'll just maybe say thank you to those two before I even start off. In January, we looked through everybody's budget. We kind of go through line by line, do a quick analysis of everything that goes on there. The tentative budget was filed with the clerk on March 21st with a $12.22 million budget. This was filed with a 4.16% tax levy increase. This represents expenditures of two-point, expenditure year-over-year increase of 2.97% or $352,000. This 4.16% tax levy increase does not comply with the tax cap, this tentative budget. The tentative budget for the village of Takahoe, the tax cap for the village of Takahoe was set at .19% this year. So villages with a fiscal year budget starting June 1st was .12%. The CPI are 2%. So then when they talk about the 2% tax levy cap, it was .12% this year. The village had a small growth factor of 1.0007%, which made that our tax levy increase allowable .19% or $14,000. So our levy of approximately $7.6 million could grow approximately $14,000 year-over-year. Obviously, that's very difficult to do. That's why I did not propose to the village board a tentative budget that was in that range. When you look at a purely parcel basis, if we did keep it, if I did provide you a tentative budget, and if you do come in at a tentative budget of .19%, that approximately, if we look at the tax freeze program, which is something that all municipalities and school districts look at right now on a pure parcel basis, it would be approximately $8 per parcel if we did stay at that point. So when we talk about freezing our taxes, it's a very minimal amount, I believe. So why didn't we stay within the cap? Definitely, there's some factors to look at. Our health insurance premiums rose 7.5% this year. We settled a contract with the police department in negotiations with DPW. We had step increases for employees in both the police department and the DPW. We put in increased court security costs. Our debt service payments went up over $200,000. And some revenue lines were decreasing this year, mainly utility revenues. So with all those difficulties, I believe the budget is actually a structurally sound budget. We're not using any fund balance or kind of our savings account from year over year, so we're not appropriating any of that, or the tentative budget did not suggest you appropriate any. The tentative budget has no staff reductions or additions, so level on the employees. Increased funding for tax certs, we're getting those every single year, so I tried to put a little increased funding for those, try to do a little bit of better budgeting on snow removal costs. And this budget also reinvests in the infrastructure. There's still $115,000 for capital costs for repaving of the streets and roads in Takahoe, and around $65,000 for equipment necessary for the police department, DPW. And also maintaining $155,000 in a contingency account, which is our savings account if we do, something unforeseen does happen, which is an appropriate amount in guidelines of New York state budgeting. So that's where we are right now. The board had a workshop last Saturday, April 2nd, where they talked about, we talked with the police, DPW, and the building department. Your next workshop is on the 16th. The library will be in, the community center, and the court will come in. Tonight is the public hearing. The board must close the public hearing by April 20th, so if you decide to keep it open, you'd have to schedule another day to actually close that public hearing. And the tentative budget, or a budget that you agree on, must be voted on and passed before May 1st. And so you have a meeting set up for April 25th to do that.
So all around, we're doing some good budgeting. We're doing some smart budgeting and responsible budgeting. I think responsible is the most important word. We've made it a pledge to make sure that we don't go ahead and raid the savings account. And that's what a lot of school districts have to do, or have been somewhat forced to do, in order to stay under the state tax cap. They'll go ahead and use available fund balance, which is an essential savings account. And we've pledged to our residents that we're not going to do that. We're going to make sure that we keep a healthy fund balance. That's important for the rating that this village gets. The rating is actually the measure that the rating agencies use to go ahead and determine how much interest we're going to pay when we do have to go out and borrow money. So it all kind of runs downhill. The flow goes downhill, and it's very, very important that we are very responsible. We're making sure that we're keeping the correct staffing levels, not too excessive to provide the security and cleanliness of our village. And that's first and foremost of what we all want to accomplish. So thank you very much for that report. And with that, that's going to, this public hearing is open, so I actually throw it out to the general public. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on our budget? And if not, I'm going to ask any of the board members. Any of the board members have anything to throw in there? David was very comprehensive, so...
I just wanted, you know, let the residents know that this is a tentative budget. The budget has not been voted on. There are still, you know, opportunities to refine the budget and perhaps make it a little bit lower. So we still have some opportunities and some work ahead.
Yep. We have a hearty day coming up on Saturday, that's for sure. So we will be meeting, as Mr. Burke mentioned, on Saturday, April 16th. We will have a budget adoption meeting on April 25th. And with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. That's going to bring me to the adoption of minutes of past meetings. And the first is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 7, 2016. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Then there is the approval of the minutes of the reorganization meeting of April 4th, 2016. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Do we have any correspondences this month?
No, we do not.
We do not? Okay. So that is going to bring us to the first opportunity to address this board on anything that's on our agenda. So if there's anybody who would like to come up and talk to us about something that's on our printed agenda tonight? And if not, we're going to get to resolutions. We're going to actually hit our first and most important resolution of the evening, which is Resolution Number One, which is appointing Christopher Harris as a police officer effective April 16, 2016, with a 52-week probationary period in accordance with the offer letter dated March 31, 2016. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And with that, I'm going to ask Chris to come on up, and his lovely wife, Ayesha, and he's going to take the oath of office.
Christopher Harris.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge. And that I will faithfully discharge. The duties of police officer. The duties of police officer. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Thank you very much. If you'd like to say a word to your... Good evening, everyone. Just thankful to be here tonight, very thankful for this opportunity to service this community from here, so from here forward. Thank you to my wife here, and my two children for being here and for their support. I look forward to seeing everyone in the community and being of service to you. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Chief, would you like to come on up and say a word or two?
Thank you, Mayor. The process was that we had gone through so many resumes and interviewed many of the candidates that came before the police department, and then we narrowed the field to a small group that went before the village board. And Christopher stood out amongst the crowd. He comes with a very impressive resume. He has a Bachelor of Arts degree in criminal justice from John Jay College, where he graduated cum laude. He has a Master of Science in Education from Lehman College. He served several years as an investigator with Child Protective Services in the City of New York. He has three years' experience with the City of Mount Vernon Police Department, where he had received training as a tactical operator with their SWAT team. He's a field training officer, and he came highly recommended. So we think that, we know that Christopher is a fine fit for the Takahoe Police Department, not only because of his education and his background, but because of his character. We know that he'll be, he has already spoken about embracing our community policing philosophy, and he's a perfect fit for our department. So we welcome him, and we wish him the very best of luck.
Well, thank you, Chief. Thank you. You know, we had some exceptional candidates for this position, and Chris definitely rose to the top. He's actually coming to us with former experience from the Mount Vernon Police Department, so I think that's a little bit of a bonus. And I'm sorry for Mayor Thomas, his loss is our gain. So I want to welcome you. This is a great community, as you know, as you, when you interviewed, you were, you know, very well aware of our municipality. So we're really looking forward to getting your boots on the street. So with that, is there anybody else in the public who would like to say a word or two? And how about my colleagues on the board here? Anybody?
Chris, just wanted to echo the mayor's sentiments and to congratulate you and to welcome you to our village. As the chief and Mayor Eklund said, you distinguished yourself among the other candidates, and I'm certain that in, over the course of your career here, that you will distinguish yourself further. And so we look forward to seeing you here as a friendly face over the years.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Chris, I just wanted to let you know, welcome. We're very, very proud to have you on our police force. Our police force is second to none, and it's wonderful to have you as an addition. I know we expect great things out of you, and I'm sure you're going to deliver. And congratulations to your family as well.
Chris, Chief, by now, I think, over the years, knows the catchphrase that I like to use in welcoming new police officers. And that is what struck me, was your sense of humanity, which I think is so integral to being a well-rounded police officer, not only here in Takahoe, but in any municipality that you work with. And you displayed that quite eloquently. So congratulations, welcome aboard, and I look forward to working with you myself as well.
Chris, congratulations to you and your family. I mean, when we had our interviews, you really stood out. I think you're a great human being, and I think you'll be a great asset to Takahoe. And welcome aboard.
So with that, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess. I'd like to invite Chris to come on out. We're going to take a few pictures with yourself and the chief, so is that okay? Great. Thank you. So we're going to take a 10-minute recess, everyone. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much for that brief delay. We're so happy to welcome in our brand-new Takahoe police officer. So the next item we're going to do on our agenda tonight is, we're actually going to have a very special presentation from the man who heads up our Department of Public Works. Frank DiMarco actually gave us this PowerPoint presentation at our work session, and he really knocked our socks off. So we said, you know what? This is something, it was great for us to see it. And I have to tell you that all of us, the entire village board, we sat in the room when he gave this presentation, and there was something in that presentation, there was one item that each one of us picked up and we said, wow, we had no idea that the Public Works Department of Takahoe actually performed that function. So we asked him to come tonight and actually give the presentation to the general public. So Frank, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, board members. You know, when I put this PowerPoint together, it pretty much surprised myself. This is work that DPW's been doing for the eight years that I've been here. There's much more of the work that our department has done, but as a brief summary of what the Department of Public Work does on a daily basis, plus a lot of other amenities and projects that we've done. But most importantly, we have to view these projects and say to ourselves that these are taxpayer dollars that we've saved along the way, which is most important. But I'll reiterate that as we go along. I'll even put price tags against, you know, some of the projects that we've done. I'm sorry about my voice, but listeners at home, if you're having a hard time hearing me, please raise the volume in your TV and listen carefully, because this is all pretty interesting. I'm going to start off, these are the men, these are my men of DPW. There's 18 of us with two seasonals, basically for leaf season, which is fall, and two seasonals in the summer months. You know, my mission statement since I've started here eight years ago is to promote effective, efficient, and sustainable service to the people of Takahoe. Bring DPW's morale to its highest level, motivate employees to take part, educate employees, team development and decision-making, introduce cross-training techniques to the men, create a healthy, happy, and a collaborative work environment at DPW. You know, these might sound simple, some of these summaries that I'm going to go over, but these are questions that are constantly asked of DPW. When does your workday begin? When is your lunch? Our workday begins at 6:30 in the morning. We have a 15-minute break about 8:30, and lunch begins at 11:30 to 12:30. They work a longer timeframe between 6:30 and 11:30 because they're most productive at that time, which is most important. There are no afternoon breaks, because I feel that a break in the middle of a two-hour timeframe, which is what they work in the afternoon session, is really not a productive point. So we've eliminated the afternoon break, and we added it towards the end of their day. So the day ends at 2:45. This is our DPW organizational chart. It's broken down very specifically, but if you want to view this, our annual DPW report for 2015 is on our website. So most of this is on our website detailing all of our functions, and the summary of all of DPW does. But I'll be remiss, because I forgot to include, and I'm ashamed of myself, Jackie Ferretti, who's an integral part of our DPW. She helps us with our administrative, she's our administrative assistants, assistant, and she works remotely here at the clerk's office. She answers a lot of our calls and handles a lot of our paperwork. This is briefly broken down. You have General Foreman James Gizel and myself. We have six sanitation workers, seven highway, one mason, and one mechanic, very briefly.
Frank, can I just jump in? Can I jump in just one second? Because this is a very common question that I get a lot, highway. We're not on the highway. We're not at I-95. So people say, what do you mean by highway? So if you could just elaborate.
I'll elaborate just a little bit. Obviously, sanitation workers, we have six sanitation workers. We have two trucks. We have a north side and a south side. So, each truck is, has three employees per truck. What Highway Department does, it's our street sweeping, it's our, our, our maintenance of lights and infrastructure, it's our, it's our mason's assistant, and, and it's really watering, landscaping, taking care of our parks, taking care of our parking lots, and taking care of our sidewalks. And especially during the winter months when we have a snow season, we do all the shoveling and maintenance of the, the public right of way. And that's handled basically by the Highway Department. Mason is obviously our mason, Artie, and our mechanic, which is our owner mechanic, we only have one, and that's Joe Tavalillo. You know, I'm constantly being asked of the sanitation men, what do they do? What are their functions? Years ago, they used to, you know, leave early and go home after their, their route has been completed. But what we've done over the years is we've, we changed the contract to make sure that they work a full day now. So, they're no longer going home after they've completed their job. Most important, and the premise behind that, is actually to slow them down. It wasn't to give them more work, but to make the job safer. They were finishing at 11:30, 12:30, rushing actually to go nowhere. So, we wanted to slow them down, we wanted to make it safer for them, but I'll go on to explain the other functions that they do. On Monday, they do household garbage and their day is completed at 12:30. So, a day like Monday and Friday where they're both completed at 12:30, we go down to the lower list and what they do is they clean and maintain sanitation truck and equipment during that two-hour timeframe that they're allowing us after their sanitation pickup. They clean and maintain our DPW facility, so all that is done in-house. We pressure watch garbage and recycling containers throughout the entire village. We do public outreach, which years ago, what we used to do is General Foreman and myself would go out and give out oop stickers, but they're actually ringing doorbells now and educating the public on recycling and proper sustainable methods of, of putting out your garbage and recycling. There's open lines of communication between sanitation workers and public. And they assist highway crew when needed and when there's time available. So, now they're putting in a full day, but their full day is really equipped with many of these functions that they're doing on a daily basis. So, they are no longer going home after the route is completed and they are working a full day. Again, the main premise behind having them work all day is to make it safe for them. Don't forget, these garbage men, sanitation workers are going to everybody's home to collect the garbage and they're collecting curb site on a Tuesday, Wednesday, and a Thursday. But I don't think there's one time, and even when we had two feet of snow, that they didn't pick up the garbage. So, they're, they're a great crew and they really work hard. I mean, to be out there during the entire year, with all the change of seasons, whether it be hot, cold, snowing and raining, it really takes an abuse on someone's body. The highway, excuse me, the highway consists of seven employees and two seasonal workers. As I begin to explain, you know, the seven and the two, which is nine, they equate really quickly when you start talking about one sweeper, a watering truck going out with one employee, have sand, a landscaping done throughout the village, we have four employees, street lights in repair, that's two employees, and a mason's helper. You know, so that equates to our nine total. Where we lose in the summer months is that our, our sanitation workers, when they begin to go on vacation, we schedule usually two a week, they're replaced by highway workers. We don't allow seasonal workers to go on a sanitation truck, because I'll go on to explain why later. So, you can see how the seven or nine really equate to this entire functionality of DPW and it just, the guys are really working hard. Parks and municipalities, these are all the areas that we maintain at DPW. You know, we got parks and municipal buildings, we have 16. Village vegetated areas and grass strips, you know, we have 19 of those. Village islands and extensions, we have seven. Village dead ends, we have six. Parking lots in the Village of Tuckahoe, we have 16 parking lots that we maintain in the Village of Tuckahoe. Sidewalks, we have over two miles of sidewalks that we maintain throughout the year. And that's 26 areas of sidewalks. This is just an interesting fact, the sanitation statistic, statistics that, the fatality rate of sanitation workers is 30 fatalities per 100,000 employees. Sanitation workers rate seven out of 10 of the most dangerous jobs in America. And this is the U- United States Bureau of Labor Statistics specifying that we rate seven out of the 10. I'm going to go on to explain what we basically do on a daily basis. Replace light fixtures, streetlights, any overhead work that we do on a daily basis. This is basically done on a daily basis with two men. Street sweeper goes out pretty much every day of the year. The DPW employees, we plant on the average of 80 to 90 trees a year throughout the village. We also maintain all the trees in public right of way. The guys do a great job. We really do a fantastic job maintaining these trees. The ta- the past two windstorms we've had, we haven't had one tree limb down. That goes to show you the extent of, of servicing these trees by the DPW. In-house, we've been replacing all the street fixtures to LED. So, we've replaced approximately, at this point, 65% of all village streetlights to LED in-house. We do a lot of drainage work. This, this work was done at the Main Street Park for the tennis court. We did all the underground drainage. We do a lot of work to keep the cost minimal on a lot of the projects that are being done here in Tuckahoe. I'll go on to explain some more projects that we've done. This is the Crestwood Project. We were managing and overseeing both the underground utility work, all the overhead wires and utility poles were put underground on this project, and coordinating the work from the underground utilities with this Crestwood building project. A lot of, there's a lot of additional work that was done by DPW that was overseen and it typically is on a lot of projects like this, but instead of subbing it out or subbing it out to the contractors that were doing the work in Crestwood, we did a majority of the work in-house. Public outreach, you know, we're, we're big on public outreach. Again, I have my sanitation workers ringing doorbells and, and educating the public on what is right and what is not. This is Joe Tavalillo, one of the government gatherings, a sustainable event that they had up at the county center. These are some of our sustainable projects that are done in-house. This is the bio-swell on Jackson Avenue. And what a bio-swell simply does, it redirects rainwater to go into a vegetated area, so you don't have to water that area. That's all that a bio-swell is. This is the same bio-swell. And when we first started here, we were, we were picking up vegetable oil from local establishments, restaurants. We were processing the vegetable oil at the DPW facility. And Joe Tavalillo, our mechanic, had converted two of the sanitation trucks at the time to run on vegetable oil. You know, saving the taxpayer dollars, I think at the time was $20,000 a year on fuel. So, two of the trucks were converted by our mechanic. And again, most of these projects I want my employees to take on because it, it, there's a sense of pride and, and a sense of completion of a project like this, which is most important. Motivate your employees are most important for me. Because if you motivate your employees, you have a happy household here. And that's what's going on. This is Joe Tavalillo recycling the vegetable oil and processing it so it could run in our trucks. We also, we also harvest roof rainwater. And what this does is, is used for irrigation system at the DPW facility. So, we're using rainwater to irrigate our, our landscaping. These are some of the projects. And what the schools do annually is have a, we, we have a trolley, our trolley going around, showing some of our sustainable projects and what we do here in Tuckahoe as an educational component. This is Arbor Day with the mayor. And this is at Cottle School and ICS. We do this annually where we meet with the students and explain exactly what Arbor Day is all about. We also promote Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is October. We do this annually. We've been doing this for the past four years now. And a cri- excuse me, Christmas tree event that I miss, but you know, we've, we've done that, I know we've for the past several years. It got to the point where our Christmas tree wouldn't even make it down Main Street. I think we were side-swiping all the cars that would be in park there. But the trees have become monstrous at one point. So, I think what we decided to do this past year is just, just plant a tree and hope it grows. These are some of the smaller projects we've done at DPW. This was in conjunction with the Boy Scouts. This was an Eagle, Eagle project. And this is our Tuckahoe Library seating area. What's incorporated is also the memorial stones in the walkway on this project. These are some of the smaller projects. This is an island on Sylvan Avenue. We try to incorporate a lot of our Tuckahoe stones in most of our projects. It gives it, it gives it that Tuckahoe feel. This is our Andrews, this is our parking lot behind a building here, our municipal building. And this is a handicap walkway into the Andrews Center. And our, our entrance steps into the lot, which is also right behind that, that other project. We do sidewalks throughout the entire village. Public sidewalks, let me correct myself. Public sidewalks only. And these are the sidewalk, this is the sidewalk behind the municipal building on Underhill Street. This is Cameron. To the left, you can see where the, where the street area was cut, but that curb was two feet into Cameron. So, we've narrowed the road, creating more parking along Cameron. We, we redid all the trees that were dying there. The soil beneath the sidewalk was all rubble, so we had to remove that. This picture doesn't show justice, but that entire area was excavated and proper soil was put in place so these trees could properly grow. We also installed two decorative street lamps on that Cameron side and all the sidewalks were redone there. This is our DPW backup electrical generator. The generator was given to us through a grant, but DPW employees installed all the conduit and all the switching mechanisms and put them in place for this to work properly at a savings of about $100,000. This was a big undertaking, but this is only a, a small job that we've taken on out of some others that I'm going to show you. These are just some of the projects that we're taking on in our unique department, our unique DPW department. There is no other DP department that I know of in Westchester does the work that we do. I'm very proud of my men and they're, they're proud of themselves and they should be. This is a switching mechanism for the generator. Back in Storm Irene of 2011, I don't know if everybody remembers, but the water levels have risen to a level that was, could have been destructive. To the left, you see those blocks, those concrete blocks that were given to us by a friend of mine in Mount Vernon. We used them to separate the pedestrian walk to where the Army Corps of Engineers was going to be doing their work, which is the area that we're looking at now. But we had the storm approaching, the Storm Irene of 2011, and my men decided that let's, let's build a levee. You know, the water levels were going to rise. So, I said, guys, let's do it. And that's what they did. They built a levee. They built a levee going down and across. And I don't know if everybody remembers the water level of Irene of 2011, but it was pretty substantial. Don't forget, we're at the lower point of the Bronx River, so we receive water from White Plains and all the municipalities that follow that to reach Tuckahoe. This is the water level. It, this is, this picture doesn't really do it justice because the water level was overspilling the top of the barriers. This is, this is where, I guess we were able to relax. We didn't have time to take pictures, but when I was able to take a picture, this is what I shot. The water level was above these, this levee that we built and spilling over. So, could you imagine the devastation that this would have caused Yonkers Avenue if these levees weren't in place? Homes would have been flooded. You can see the difference in the water level? And again, imagine the water level to the left at the top of the levees. There were homes that followed to the left all the way down Yonkers Avenue. And this is, excuse me, this is what we did with the blocks afterwards. We had, we wanted to create a salt shed at the DPW facility, so we used those, what they call mafia blocks, to create this wall. The Fisher Avenue Park, I really don't know if everybody remembers what that looked like before. No matter what you planted there, nothing grew. The lime content in the soil was so high that nothing grew there. So, we used native vegetation and everything just kind of really took off. This is what it looked like before. And this is where we're starting to develop the park. Putting mulch on top of fabric, you can see where we're starting to plant the native vegetation. We're curving along Young, Young Place and the fencing. Irrigation was put in place. There's also bio swells in there too. And this is on the Young, Young Place side. And this is with our irrigation in place. You know, areas like this are also kept up, I have to mention, by the Tree Committee. A lot of this landscape architect work was done by Sandy De Ray, Sandy Ray, Ray's. And, you know, they, they take an active part in this every year. The Crestwood Pocket Park. We're at the conceptual stage now with this. But we're going, you know, it's kind of hard to go back on this. I, I had nothing else to show you, but we're going to be putting trees in there, benches, there's going to be seating area in there, light fixtures, a lot of vegetation. It's going to be a comfortable site for someone to read a paper and have a bagel and a cup of coffee. This is the wall, this is the wall behind this Pocket Park area. That was one of the projects that we had to take on in-house. That was one of unforeseen projects for that Crestwood area, Crestwood Development Project. We did that wall in-house. This is Hollywood Avenue. And what we did here, at home at the end of the block there would constantly be flooded every time we had a heavy rain because the right side of the road was, was guiding all the water that was coming down this enormous hill into that home. So, what we did is we were able to contour the road and redirect the water to the left side. So, the left side, we lowered the curbs and the right side, we raised the sidewalks and curbs. And Petriello was going to redo the roadway for us, for Con Edison at, at the time, and I had him contour the road and redirect the water away from the home. This is where we lowered the sidewalk and curb and this is where we raised it. This is Main Street Park. This is what it looked like before we even excavated. It's just a mess. So, we created a five-foot handicap walkway. Everybody remember the planters, the old planters? Railroad ties, they were all rotted away. And what we did is we incorporated Tuckahoe stone into these planters. There were two planters, one to the right and one to the left. I mean, a project like this is about $150,000. We did all this work in-house. Westview Island Project, this is Grant to the left, Westview to the right. What we needed to do here, besides getting rid of that couch that's there to the right, we needed to create some parking for Westview residents. And what we did is we added an additional eight parking spots. We took that curb and we brought it out into Sagamore, create a nice medium with trees and planting area, but it allowed us also to create parking to the right. We had vegetation growing through window wells. It was just crazy. It looked horrible. So we created, we extended the sidewalk to create a buffer zone for parking. We made the sidewalk handicap accessible. And that's the final product. We added two trees, we added a seating area, landscaped area, decorative street light out front. Created eight parking spots to the right for that Westview area. DPW projects. This is what DPW looked like when I got there. This is what it looks like now. We do all of our work in-house. We do all of our maintenance in-house. We do everything to maintain these buildings in-house. All right, this is one of our bigger projects. This is Yonkers Avenue. This is working in conjunction with the Army Corps of Engineers along Yonkers Avenue. This is what the road looked like before we started the work. We had to move the utility poles out of the way, the vegetation, the trees, the overgrowth had to be cut. There was so much in-house work that we had to do to keep this cost down. I would say probably, it seems like 50% of the work was done by DPW. But are part of this project for us, beginning with removing the road, excavating the road, removing the fence, the vegetated area, and working in conjunction with Con Edison to move the utility pole. Excuse me. We had to construct, form, and pour a lot of the curbing detail. The curbing detail, you'll see in the upcoming photos, that ties into the road. This is our sanitation worker helping with the rebar. He's forming, bending, tying everything in place. These are my workers doing this work. This is forming. We had to form all this, these areas for our footing and also for our detailed curbing. We also had to tie in areas of the old and the new. To the left is the old site, the new is on the right. So we needed to really fuse these areas together with rebar and cement. So that was part of our in-house work. If you're looking at it from a distance, this is what it looks like. If you're looking at it from across the way. So that corner area, we had to complete in-house. Some of the rebar work. This is our curbing detail. You can see how extensive it really is. The Army Corps of Engineers, their architect, there was a mishap where they overelevated the curbing detail by eight inches. My guys found this and my guys corrected it. You know, so we had, there was eight inches of elevation along probably a 50-foot span that we needed to correct. So we cut that back and we had to, obviously, see, we had to reform all the rebar work into the existing. This is my men doing all this work. We poured over 700 cubic yards of concrete. What DPW department do you know pours 700 cubic yards of concrete? That forming work, the elevation work, the mesh work, the rebar work, all that work was done in-house. You can see the extent and the thickness of the concrete slab. The forming, the mesh work. This is our highway individual, Joe Marzella. What we also did is there was no lighting incorporated in this design. So as you can see, the box in front of Joe is an electrical pull box. So we had to incorporate electrical and three decorative lampposts along that wall. So all the conduit work and all this extensive work was also done in-house. This is in preparation for blacktop. You know, again, if you average the cost for this project, it's well over $700,000. The work that was done in-house. And these are all my men working together, making this job work. The railing work was done in-house. The railing was supplied by the contractor, but we've installed it in-house. And this is the final outcome. I'm done with the projects, but I just want to explain some of the projects that we do have coming up. You know, Crestwood train stations, for example. If you look along the wall that's running parallel with Columbus Avenue, there's a 250-foot stretch of wall that looks like this. We're working in conjunction with MTA right now to get permits so we could get back there to do this type of work. But again, we're doing this in-house. If we were to subcontract this work out, you're at a cost of about $300,000. But these, again, are some of the projects that we're looking to do in-house. This is just part of that wall. You can see where it's starting to undermine from the sidewalk area and creating a dangerous situation. Back here, two chimneys, we're looking to take on this work and we're going to be doing the demolition work for this building. This is the Lower Oak Avenue parking lot. The wall is disintegrating, so we need to rebuild this wall and make it safe. This is work that we're looking to take on this year. Sidewalks, you know, we just have so many sidewalks that are entirely in need of repair. So we've temporarily patched it right before the winter just to make it safe for everybody. What we also like to do is our tree planting area, it's really becoming an unsafe area. So we're looking to dress it up like we did at Crestwood. You know, so this is what we're doing in our tree pits in Crestwood, which will make it easily accessible for pedestrians also. And this is the end of a busy day. The guys have just had it. You know, hear it all the time. This is what we do in DPW every day. Thank you.
Well, Frank, that's a very, very impressive presentation. I'm glad you brought it tonight. You know, one of the, a couple of things that I noticed, and I've been on the board when, before you were here. Excuse me. And one of the things I've come to realize is that, I could tell you before you were here and when we didn't have as talented a group of men as we do now, we were constantly having to call up all the different local mason contractors or site work contractors, electricians, plumbers, just for the smallest of thing. And you know, it's no different whether you're calling them to come and fix a municipal piece of real estate or your own private home or your own local business, you know, it's thousands and thousands of dollars. It was five grand every time we had to put a catch basin in. We didn't do that in-house. We had to pick up the phone and make that phone call. So to be able to have a department that, I think probably the most important thing is the hiring practices. We have pledged to you that the hiring practices will be under the first, the first role of hiring practices are going to be from your men. They're going to go ahead, as you've set up a committee, where they actually look at and pre-interview the best of the best. And that's what we're hiring. There's no nepotism, there's no handout jobs. These are, the best qualified people are getting employed by your department. And having the best qualified people, these are skilled individuals who we just need to go ahead and give them the tools and the materials so they can go ahead and continue to make our village as beautiful as they have been doing it. So I think that we've gotten over the hurdle of making sure that hiring practices are, have been put in place, where the best hiring practices are in place now. And the second part is making sure that your department is funded properly. When we initially had all of your talented people coming on board, it was like kids in a candy store. I know I was on the board and, you know, it was great, hey, we have these guys to do it. Well, let's build this, build that, build this. And we were kind of relying on your overall budget to cover the cost of these things, but the bottom line is if we're not going to adequately fund your budget to go ahead and do those projects, you're going to have a shortfall at the end of the year. So with a village administrator on hand now, we are properly, the second part of this is we are properly budgeting for capital projects. And what you just pointed out are capital projects. And we identify them now in advance. We discuss them, we properly budget for them, we come up with a cost analysis of what these are going to cost in terms of, not just bricks and mortar, but in terms of labor costs. And we make sure that we make a decision as a board whether or not we want to move forward with those projects, some of which are not necessarily optional decisions. There are, as you mentioned, these are maintenance items. You know, a retaining wall along Columbus Avenue, it has to be fixed. Unfortunately, we found out through a survey that the village owns it. It would have been wonderful if MTA owned it. But it's a village piece of real estate and that fence, that big wrought iron fence, and I'm sure that has a lot to do with it, of putting the pressure on that wall, that's going to have to be fixed. So we say to ourselves, well, do we just put our head in the sand and say, you know what, it's not going to fall? Or do we realize, as you have, that, you know what, it's something that has to be addressed? Let's address it before it gets worse, just like you would do in your own house. And let's make sure we have quality and people who can do the job and make sure we've put enough money in funding to get it done. So I think that the department has come a long way. And I'm going to give you credit. I know you're pretty modest and you don't want to take credit for it, but people should realize that, you know, your background is in construction. And I always felt that a department like a public works department should always be run by somebody who has, own their own construction business. And you know, if you were a GC, as you were, you did everything. You did, you put up buildings, you did masonry work, you're a licensed electrician, people may not realize that. You do a little bit of plumbing, you're a carpenter. So to have the management skills of somebody such as yourself who can go ahead and put all that together, if we give you the right amount of funding to get these jobs done, you just showed us the tip of the iceberg, I think, of what really can be done in this community. So thank you, thank your men, and great presentation. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Frank. So we're going to shift back into our agenda, and that's going to bring me to Resolution Number Two. And I'm looking at our village clerk, because she always keeps me on point. Yes, Resolution Number Two is setting a public hearing on a proposed local law amending the Village of Tuckahoe Code, Section 21-67, regarding parking violation fines. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And just, oh, I'll say, really quick, basically, well, I'll ask Mr. Burke to tell us what we're doing on this one. This is, we're going to...
Sure, just want to first mention, we should set this for our special meeting of April 25th. We should actually have this, that meeting. What this local law basically does is currently, the village board can set fines for any parking violation, say, parking in a fire zone or overtime parking, that kind of nature, through resolution. What you couldn't do is change the meter rate, so the meter fines and overtime fines through resolution, it was through our ordinance. So what this does is actually clears this up and it's going to allow the Board of Trustees to change any of those fines whenever you want through a resolution and not through the ordinance. That's what this does.
When we do it by fee schedule then?
Yes.
Right. Which is good. Smart, smart way to handle this.
Yes.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luisi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eglin.
In favor. Resolution Number Three is authorizing a Shiloh Baptist Church cancer walkathon on Saturday, April 30th, 2016, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., consisting of a one-mile walk and a three-mile walk, beginning at the Shiloh to Fisher Avenue and back to Shiloh for the one mile, or from Shiloh to Fisher Avenue to Columbus Avenue, down to Lake Avenue and back to Main Street to Marbledale Road to Shiloh. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luisi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eglin.
In favor. Resolution Number Four, authorizing a Tuckahoe Cheerleader Victory Parade on Saturday, May 21st. The parade route is from ICS down Winter Hill Road to Main Street, left on Oak Avenue, and into Depot Square. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luisi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eglin.
In favor. Resolution Number Five is authorizing the Tuckahoe seniors' use of the Tuckahoe trolley on May 3rd to take the seniors to Cottle School for the spring concert and lunch. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luisi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eglin.
In favor. Resolution Number Six, authorizing a car wash fundraiser for the Tuckahoe Varsity Baseball Team on Sunday, April 17th, from 9:00 to 3:00, in the Tuckahoe Community Center parking lot. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luisi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
Favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eglin.
In favor. Resolution Number Seven is approval of yoga in the square for suicide prevention to be held on June 8th, 2016, 6:30 p.m. Registration yoga, 7:00 p.m. So the registration is 6:30 and the yoga will start at 7:00. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I remember last year, this is pretty, pretty good. What a picture that was. The whole square had everyone with their yoga mats out. That was pretty interesting.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luisi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eglin.
In favor. Resolution Number Eight is authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of $502,771.22. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luisi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eglin.
In favor. Under discussion items tonight, we have, I decided we're going to actually talk about some of the large construction projects that are underway or in concept or through our board. And specifically, we're going to talk about three. The first one is the big project, everyone calls it the Phil Raffiani project. It's actually the Roseland Properties project, which is the development at the end of Marbledale Road at Main Street. We did get an email from Mr. Raffiani who wanted to let us know that his construction is ongoing. Most of the heavy stuff, the parking and traffic issues are going to ease up over the next few weeks. We can see that a lot of the exterior masonry is now starting to rise on that building. The focus over the next three months is going to be finishing all of the streetscape work, sidewalks, any of the site work that they have. There'll be some landscaping elements and then completion of the building exteriors and the common area and the apartment finishes, which will be all the interior apartment features. They are planning on opening both buildings simultaneously, and they expect to kick off and onsite marketing in the end of May, so that's the end of next month, and to have people move in in July of this year. So that's a pretty aggressive schedule. Anyone interested in the project can visit the website at quarryplace@tuckahoe.com. So for people who don't realize it, the project, there'll be a sign there afterwards, and it is called the Quarry Place at Tuckahoe, so that's important. And they're going to be reaching out to, the developer's going to be reaching out to prospective residents prior to opening the leasing office, and they're going to contact us pretty soon to run a job fair. They will have some employment opportunities there, and they would very much like to be able to hire locally. So we will make sure that we put on our village website and run on our TV scroll any of those job fair opportunities, because we certainly want to capitalize on any of those opportunities for our residents. The next, I'm going to just talk briefly about, the address is 300 Columbus Avenue. Mr. DeMarco showed a beautiful photo of that project, which has been completed up in Crestwood. We are seeing that it looks like the project is more than half occupied. The retail space has not been leased up yet. I know that there was a chocolate business that was fully approved at the planning board. Haven't heard anything recent on that, but we know that, we see, well, I live in the neighborhood, so I, at nighttime, I see, I gaze... I gauge how many apartments are filled based on how many lights are on inside apartments at night. And it seems like there's quite a few. And the parking field in the back has quite a few cars in it now. So that project came out, it's beautiful. And once we finish our little pocket park across the street that Mr. DeMarco mentioned, it's really going to bring that, that end of the Village of Tocco together. And then finally, we're going to talk a little bit tonight about the project that is been navigating through the planning board at one oh nine Marble Dale Road. This is a large, open tract of land that a developer has been, before these, or he went through zoning board, got a variance. This is where the hotel is being proposed. And it's a Marriott Spring Hill Suites Hotel that's been proposed there. We actually had a very intensive meeting at our work session with our environmental engineer. I hope, his name is Mike Musso, he's here tonight with us. Is that the correct title, environmental engineer? I use that all the time, I hope it's right. Okay.
Project manager.
Okay. So people should recognize Mike, he works for the village. He's on our dime. He's the guy who is protecting us, protecting the residents of the Village of Tocco. Not saying that the developer isn't, but he's the guy who gets paid by us to make sure that everything is going to be constructed there with the best environmental practices. So I'm going to ask Mike to maybe kind of run through some of the bullet points that you gave us at our work session, because it was very, very enlightening to hear some of the things that you were talking to us about.
Appreciate it, may I?
Yes, please.
Thank you for the intro, Mayor and members of the Board of Trustees. So, right, I work for H D R, an environmental engineering consulting company. We do a lot of municipal work around the Hudson Valley, for many municipalities here in Westchester, in fact. And we're oftentimes tasked to review development projects, specific environmental aspects of those projects, look at things like regulations that are in effect or standards. And this project, I think, is very interesting. We were involved here in, in the fall, two thousand fifteen. But I know there's been a longer dialogue about the development aspects of the site and the planning aspects of the Marble Dale Road site. So as introduction, what we've been doing to date on behalf of the village, we've been participating at meetings like this one and with the planning board and work sessions. We've been interfacing directly with the New York State D E C case manager. And for this project, the applicant has entered into the Brownfields Cleanup Program, which is a set program that's administered by the, the D E C. Important to note that the New York State Department of Health is also a key player at any project that enters, enters that Brownfields Cleanup Program. So I've been working to understand that agreement that the developer entered into with the D E C a couple of years ago. I've been checking regularly on the status and schedule. We provided, H D R has provided some preliminary comments that I, that I could talk about in a minute, to the New York State D E C. Right now, we're in the middle of a forty-five day comment period, public comment period, that ends on April twenty-fourth. And we're, what D E C is reviewing is the proposed remedial action for this project. So I think we all, we all know it's a development project, it's site planning, many issues that are being discussed at the planning board level. But it's also an important environmental project. Under the Brownfields Program, the goal is to assess human health and the environment based on data that's collected. The data that's been collected to date has been through approved work plans that the D E C and the D O H have reviewed. The D E C has also collected some of their own data along the way here. We've been monitoring that and looking at the data. We've also been looking at comments from the public that have been submitted, different consultant reports that have been submitted to the D E C. And also making sure that the D E C case manager is, is aware of these goings on here in the village, what the sentiments are, what they should be prepared for. And very soon, they'll be holding a public hearing here under the Brownfields Cleanup Program. You know, I was very happy to hear that. Under the Brownfields Rules and Regulations, the D E C is required to put together a public participation plan. But I think it's very nice here that the team, the case manager and his team at D E C are actually coming down. And I know they've been here before, even before H D R's involvement. Also during the course of our work, we've looked at the, the technical regulations in the Brownfields Program. I'll talk in, in a little bit about the data that's been collected, both soil, groundwater, and also soil gas data that's been collected onsite, again, under procedures that are standard in the industry, but also a work plan that's been approved by the agencies. I've been to the site a few times now, walking around, having boots on the ground, you know, reviewing some of the historic information, learning about it through some of the, the village representatives. And also met the D E C and also the, the applicant's environmental people. They have their own team of environmental consultants. They're the ones who have prepared these documents and reports that the D E C has been reviewing. So, so two, two-day milestones, I think, considered for the project. I think this board is, is aware of many of them. There was a remedial investigation work plan that was submitted. That's what I mentioned, where the applicant will, will put forth, here's some historic data, here's where we need to sample and why. And soil, groundwater and soil gas samples were collected. That work was approved and the applicant has gone out and done sampling at the site. They've collected samples of soil, groundwater and soil gas. And they've submitted what's called a remedial investigation report. Pretty thick reading. It's full of laboratory data, data summary tables and figures. And from that is the following document, and that's where we're in the process right now. The D E C has reviewed that remedial investigation report and it's in finalization. So what's the next stage? The next stage then is to look at that data and propose what to do with the site. Under the Brownfields Program and under development, the site will get better environmentally for, for human health and the environment. The remedy that's being proposed now by the applicant, and I want to stress, it is still being reviewed by the D E C and the D O H. They'll have comments on it. We've had comments on some aspects of that remedy. What's being proposed right now for the site is removing thirteen areas of soil contamination called hotspots. These are soil sample locations that had concentrations of things like metals, volatile compounds, semi-volatile compounds that exceeded the end use. So you say, what's the end use of the site? Well, that data was compared to commercial cleanup standards. This is not a, a site where daycare would be built, where individual yards and homes in a residential setting would be built. We've brought it up in our comments, and I think that the, the D E C should really look hard at that data and in that remedy to make sure that they're capturing those soil areas of removal correctly. What else does a remedy propose? It is a, a cap of the site, approximately three and a half acre site. No real surprise there, right? Because it's being developed with, with new asphalt, with a building, a hotel and a restaurant-type building are proposed. But there are engineered capping systems, even for areas that are landscaped, where there could be some rainwater washing through. That has to be, meet a certain standard. Soil vapor intrusion is a very emerging and new and significant pathway or potential, potentially significant pathway of exposure. There are some compounds in the soil and groundwater at the site, which we categorize as volatile contaminants. And that means they could off-gas from that soil, from that groundwater at the site. As an added safeguard, what's being proposed are venting systems below ground. And they'll run underneath the hotel building, underneath the restaurant. They have their own design behind them. They also have a Westchester County permit that's associated with them, that I think is significant. Not all counties would require that. But in concept, they are providing soil vapor control at the site as part of the remedy. And I think last, but definitely not the most insignificant, is a, a site management program. If this site is approved, if the construction goes forward, if the Brownfields Program is approved and the remedy, et cetera, et cetera. The agencies don't go away from this project. Under the Brownfields Program, there's a site management program that would run into perpetuity. In my experience, oftentimes, it would include, you know, annual inspections of the cap by a qualified environmental professional or a professional engineer. Of course, these are details to be decided down the road. But essentially, that's the proposed remedy by the applicant. I know that the D E C and the D O H are looking very hard at that. And I think it's, it's very possible they'll, they'll add on to that or have some additional comments. One important point on the Brownfields Cleanup Program that I'd like to bring up is as the developer here is entering into, as what is called a volunteer in the Brownfields Cleaner Program, there are certain indemnifications that are given, protection of liability. And, you know, across the seventy Brownfield sites in the county, thirty of which are active, these are the type of agreements that are forged with the D E C. The environment's going to be made better here for sure. There's going to be checks on potential exposure controls. But really, that's all done on the onsite parcel, the onsite property. That's the way this Brownfield agreement was drafted. And that's really what the applicant in this case is responsible for, for cleaning up that site in general. A couple of things of note, in, in recent, recent history with the D E C's review, you know, the D E C looked at some of that remedial investigation data, in particular, the soil vapor data. When I said the volatiles that could migrate through the ground, come up off of soil or, or groundwater in the subsurface. They've determined that the soil gas medium represents a potential significant threat. And they've actually, the D E C, the state here, has actually looked along Marble Dale Road and, and done their own off-site investigation to this point. The data's not back. I, I understood that they've done that the last week in March. They went through access agreements with some of the building owners and whatnot. And I know they're taking a very hard look at some of the other data, in particular, the groundwater data. We all know that groundwater flows through the site generally from north to south. But they haven't, at least to this point, determined that onsite groundwater to be a significant threat. A significant threat is based on two things. It's based on the concentrations of contaminants, number one. And it's also based on the, the potential for exposure to happen. And being that we're in the Village of Tocco here, it's common knowledge that groundwater is not used for drinking water or to cook or to shower with. That water comes from a regulated source, off-site, municipal source. So that's important, I think, in, in any determination that they might make. I guess, long story short, is that we are in a significant period of the project as far as the D E C and the D O H are concerned, where they're reviewing and taking a very hard look at what the remedy is going to be and how it's going to look. I'll remind you again, the public comment period ends on April twenty-fourth. And this Thursday, the fourteenth, I'm sure that the D E C will, will present their ideas to that. So I look forward to attending also and perhaps asking some questions. See if you have any questions or please.
No, I, I do. We're going to, a couple of back and forth things. Some of this ground we covered at our meeting, but I thought it was important that maybe we could talk about it tonight, too. So first thing I want to talk about is there's three elements. You said soil. You said there's soil, gas and groundwater. Those are the three environmental elements that are really examined, I guess, on this property.
Yeah, and it's very common at Brownfield sites. There could be Brownfield sites that might have, say, a surface water on them.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have that here. But those are the ones that you think of in terms of impacts and potential exposures that could happen.
Okay. So let's talk about the soil for a minute. So there was thirteen hotspots of soil, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay. So let's just move the clock forward. Let's say they're developing the site, they're going to put up, not a hotel, they're going to put up a medical office building. Because it, it's property, it's, it's a property in a business zone. Something at some point will be built on this land. So, you know, right now, there's a proposal for a hotel. We, if it's not a hotel, it's going to be something. So whatever's going to be built there, it's not necessarily, the remediation work is not specific to a hotel or a car wash or a medical office building. This is work that's going to be remedial work that would be done for a project. Am I right on that?
Yeah, I, I think that is correct. I think if you look at the zoning of the property, which I understand is a, is a commercial or industrial.
Not industrial, commercial.
Commercial.
Commercial, yeah.
It, that will go in to the type of criteria that you look at.
Mm-hmm.
One thing I didn't mention as part of a remedy, there'd also be institutional controls or deed restriction on the property. So something called an environmental easement is what the applicant would need to enter. It would say that groundwater will never be used and it'll be a commitment to that. And it would prohibit things, perhaps, like the single home residences. So those, those types of things will come together, but there will be some kind of institutional control on that property. The soil data is being reviewed in light of that, that there would be a restriction and this would be a type of commercial development in general.
So let's talk about the soil. So there's thirteen hotspots of soil. So let's say they go to the first of the thirteen and they start to excavate. A lot of people are familiar with, whenever you see a gas station, they're pulling the big leaky oil tanks out. They take the soil around that and they put it in a truck container and they send it to some other state that's not in New York. They, they put it, who knows where they put it, but it doesn't stay in the Village of Tocco. So in this case here, I'm assuming they're going to dig out that soil. And do they also then take more readings and will they have to expand on the sides and the bottom? So walk us through that.
Yeah. How, how that might work out. Those locations of those thirteen hotspots and the depths are based on things like metals or semi-volatile compounds that were over, their concentrations were above those commercial objectives in soil. There's a very detailed guidance document for people like me. It's kind of our, our cookbook when we're doing this type of work. But it prescribes actually how to do this. Depending on the size of the hotspot, if you think of a square around a sample point with certain dimensions around it, the sidewalls are, are sampled and the pit of the excavation would be sampled as well. This is one of our key comments, because on the remedial action plan, because I just didn't think it was detailed enough in that. And I, I suggested that the D E C and the D O H look at that. So you're right, it's very possible that they could dig out a hotspot, take samples on the four sidewalls and one on the bottom, that's five samples. It might be that the northern sidewall is also high. There'd be a plan to remove more soil at that time. Another thing I want to make very clear and a suggestion to the D E C, that any of those hotspot removed, those, those initial hotspots that are removed based on the data, that doesn't stay in Tocco or onsite, because then why do anything? Why just move it if you're going to say you're going to use it as grading purposes? If they're failing a certain criteria in their soil samples, that all should be characterized for permanent off-site disposal. So the shapes of those hotspots and dimensions, they could certainly grow with time. Thirteen hotspots, it's going to lead to probably some confusion during the remedial process. There's going to be a lot of tracking that would need to be done and reported to D E C. All those details would be hashed out, you know, once a remedy is actually approved and decided upon.
Okay. I want to jump to soil gas. So years ago, when they were actually pulling some fuel oil tanks out of the back of the building where the karate school is now.
Yep.
At one time, I know that the D E C came down and they walked through it. So I went with the building inspector, we actually walked that property. So at that time, I was thinking, okay, that, you know, they had checked it. And after they removed that tank, they excavated the soil, just like you're talking about now. And the property was deemed clean, the soil tanks were removed offsite, and then they put in backfill. So the question I have is with soil gas, if I were to walk out on that property now, is there soil gas when I'm walking around? You know, would there be soil gas that's coming through this ground now? Or is there only soil gas when I throw a shovel in the ground and start disturbing the dirt?
Not to, you wouldn't encounter that. And there wouldn't be an inhalation type of risk for things like petroleum or the types of volatiles that we see in soil and groundwater and soil gas samples, for example. The danger with soil gas comes when you have an old structure or an old building that's nearby. There's some preferential pathway, maybe a utility corridor or some old fill soil that would convey that gas in that direction. And if there's an old building foundation or slab or maybe a sump in a basement, we've known empirically now, and this is, this is something that's very careful- known empirically now, and this is, this is something that's very carefully looked at over the last five or 10 years especially, that the gas could come in through those cracks in the basement or that sump in the basement and accumulate in spaces down below.
Sort of like radon? We have radon.
It's very much like radon. So the concern about radon is, is just that accumulation of preferential pathway, a poorly ventilated substory or first floor can lead to high readings. But we don't worry about radon just in general, walking over a field, even though it, it could be present. The real concern is when there's an ability for that to accumulate in a closed space. So that's really the concern pathway for soil gas.
And in watching some of the planning board meetings, listening to them discuss, like, running a vent pipe up through the building or the side of the building and this way to capture this, I'm assuming that's the soil gas they're talking about, to capture it and let it go above. So then I say to myself, okay, so let's say the building is, you know, a certain elevation and there's a couple of homes that are directly above it. If I lived in one of those houses, am I concerned that this pipe now maybe ends five feet above the roof line of this building and all this stuff is now basically going to spew into my bedroom window, let's say? So can you talk to me a little bit about that?
You know, I think it's a very good question, certainly. The final design, and this is, you know, the structure, especially the, the hotel building is a fairly large footprint of a structure. So whether that means, you know, one, two, or three vent pipes, I think that's all to be determined. That's a design detail that works out. I mentioned earlier that the Westchester County Health Department is also involved with these types of systems. There would be testing at this exit pipe. And if needed, there would be a carbon system that's put on there. Now, in all my years of experience doing this, in about 25 years, I've seen that, the need for that one time. And that was at an active dry cleaner with a free product of dry cleaning fluid in the subsurface. And after the venting occurred for a little while, the control was allowed to be taken off. The idea with something from the subsurface venting through, say, a four-inch diameter pipe, as soon as you're outside of the very near field, it becomes insignificant and undetectable. So, I mean, safely within single digits in terms of feet, within 10 feet, you probably can't detect that, maybe under certain conditions with, with wind blowing the right way. But, you know, the, the quantities that we have in the subsurface and soil gas and the volatiles that are in soil and groundwater, they're really not at that level where I would call that a concern or a real serious consideration. I think it's a planning board issue perhaps as an aesthetic. The planning board I know is looking at, you know, so many features of the roof line, the green roof. This would be something that, that they could inquire about perhaps.
And then the last of the three items, which is groundwater. I know that recently there's been some conversation in the village of Bronxville, is groundwater coming from the village of Toccoho and, and polluting their groundwater in the village of Bronxville? Well, you know, I think about that and I say, all right, well, is groundwater in Canada, Albany, you know, like, where does it start? Where does it end? Can you talk to me a little bit about groundwater? We assume, I guess, that it goes from north to south. I'm just going to draw that assumption.
We do know that through the remedial investigation.
How low is groundwater? Like, is it two foot off below the surface? Is it, how, can you talk to us?
Yeah, there's approximately 12 monitoring wells that were installed as part of the remedial investigation. So a few of those were installed all the way down to competent rock, which is upwards of 60 to 80 feet below existing grade. Some of those wells were dropped sort of in the middle of the fill material. What the wells have in common is that the very bottom, usually the bottom 10 feet to 15 feet of that well are screened that allow the groundwater to flow in. Static groundwater is at approximately 20 feet below grade as you're walking relatively flat site, more or less. That's where first groundwater is encountered. Again, this is not a resource that's being consumed. But groundwater does flow in general from north to south. And we know that through these monitoring wells. They've been gauged. There is somewhat of a flow pattern. I come back here to stress what the requirement is for this applicant is really to focus on their site proper, meaning within that 3.4 acre Brownfield parcel, that's what they're responsible for. So that is something that I think that DEC is taking a hard look at. We made them aware of comments. I know and confirm that they do have comments from some, some in the public here that were prepared. My other perspective, perspective on that, Mayor, is, you know, looking at our area that we live in here, it is built up. If you look at Marble Dale Road, you can go to the New York State DEC website and you could see a series of spill numbers that were listed. We know there's gas stations in close proximity to us, there's dry cleaners, there's other types of facilities, village-run and, and private, whatever it might be. So I think it's, when we're looking at Brownfield sites that are trying to redevelop, oftentimes past industrial sites or past commercial sites to another use, I think that's a balancing act that DEC has. And I think they're very aware of comments such as that. So it's not a pristine area, but again, the receptors of potable water, drinking water, you know, are not there. In the same breath, however, I will say that the DEC thought it prudent to do their own investigation offsite for soil gas. And perhaps groundwater, they'll look at the same way, but they haven't made that determination yet.
Because I know that, I've lived here all my life, that Kings, there was another company just south of where this site is, Kings Electronics. And I can remember that when they closed up shop, there was an environmental process there. I remember they had to put molasses inside.
Right.
I, I remember molasses, I could never figure out why, but, and I remember they installed even some type of monitoring vents in our DPW yard. And I think the church, if I remember, the Shalhoub Church, I think it still has one on, attached to their building. So there was, you know, so this is not, you know, for this project, this is something that occurred way more than 10 years ago.
Right. And I, I don't know all the circumstances with that, but the last thing you're describing is that soil vapor control system. Those, that's essentially the venting systems that I'm talking about that are part of the remedy. They'd be sized differently for a hotel footprint or the restaurant footprint that's proposed, but that's the type of thing that we're talking about. And, and yeah, I mean, there's, there's, again, a number of spills, a number of spills, what I mean are environmental incidences, incidents that were reported to the DEC. They could be something like somebody driving off at a gas station with the pump still in place. That would cause a discharge of product and a call to DEC would be necessary. Sometimes spills are closed within a day or two. Other times, like Kings Electronics, that's a bigger environmental report. And there was some time with remediation that was done there. So I think, you know, I think the DEC is, is well aware of, of, you know, the ambient environment that surrounds this, this Brownfield site.
So at the end of the day, when a site like this, whether it's in Toccoho or Albany, it doesn't really matter, I guess, when a property owner voluntarily applies to the New York State DEC under their Brownfield program and they become involved in it, after the remediation work is going to be completed, the site should be healthier than it is today, the day before they started.
Absolutely.
When they originally started it.
Absolutely. And, you know, the thing that I think strikes me and sometimes maybe is underestimated, but just the fact that the DEC and the Health Department have reviewed data, have commented on a remedy, and are part of a managing, management protocol going forward. They're still monitoring wells at the site. They could stick around. We've recommended that also. If, if something changes in the groundwater chemistry, they could come in and perhaps require more. And I think they're, they're taking a hard look and they have taken a hard look at the soil gas offsite. So I think they, you know, they're respectful of the comments that have been submitted to them to this point.
Well, we're very fortunate to have your, your very intelligent guide in this field. So thank you very much for.
Anytime. I appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you. And if you just stick around tonight, we may have somebody from the public when we have public comment period at the end of our.
I'll be here.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anybody from the board want to?
I might, I just have one quick question.
I have a few.
So is there any risk at some point? First of all, thank you for coming in tonight. It's very informative to the public and to us. Is there any risk that at some point the developer says, all right, what started out as a manageable plan has now become unmanageable to us and it's no longer economically viable for us to continue? So we're going to leave the site as it is and just leave it? And does that put us in a worse, is there, is there that risk? And if so, is, does that risk put us in, potentially put the village in a worse situation than we would have been in otherwise?
Well, yeah, again, not being able to speak for Marriott and, you know, I'm sure they're, they're keeping a very close look on this and this process. I think cost of cleanup is just as important as schedule and getting forward with a decision document, getting through a comment period, et cetera. As far as Brownfields programs go, the state, I feel, has worked very hard since 2006 to get an incentive for people, developers and sometimes municipalities, to enter into the program. There's funding there, there's incentives there to do it, and they really pride themselves in this program. And I, I think there's some sentiment that people think it's a big sacrifice of public health and the environment. I, I disagree. But even that said, there are applicants that go in and out of the program. You know, there are ways to get out of it. I think it's, who knows for what all the reasons are? It could be economics. You know, if, if that happened here, I think you're left with what's there right now as a site. We know already that the DEC has been lucky enough to have this data from the developer and has moved offsite to look at some things, particularly soil gas along Marble Dale Road. I don't think there's any inherent risk of the site, you know, in terms of somebody, you know, it's an off-limits site, there shouldn't be kids playing around the site or people trespassing the site for obvious reasons outside of chemical contamination. But I think the Brownfields program is, is certainly a vehicle to move things forward. And if, if the hotel is the right thing to do, you guys decide that, not me, I think you're going to get quite a bit of environmental benefit out of that as well.
Thank you. All right, yeah, like I said, if you hang around a little bit in case.
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, I'm sorry, Mr. Musso, to expand a little bit on trustee Giordano's point. Am I understanding you to say that DEC has not made a determination that this site is so contaminated that if the developer walked away, something would need to be done? Meaning proactive, DEC would say, oh, we're going to have the state come in and clean this up and clean up the site because we can't have it the way it is? Please, if you, if you might expand on that.
I, I think, I think that is accurate. The Brownfields sites, and the site is very much right in a Brownfields program, are what are called non-registry sites. And this is not a state superfund site. It's not deemed as the worst of the worst sites. It's not a pristine site and I'm not painting it as such. Now that they have that data, I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what they would do. It's an interesting question. If this was a, a Class 1 state superfund or Class 2 inactive hazardous waste site, they probably would clean it up under their state superfund money. But this is firmly in the Brownfields program right now. So, you know, that's something that I'm not sure how they would handle it. I don't think they're obligated to move it into that if that did happen, but that's really for DEC to, to put the final say on.
You, you posed another question, another thought. The remediation plan that is currently being put forward by the developer, DEC would not have a plan that would be less than sufficient should the developer walk away? Meaning if DEC said, we, the state, are going to need to come in here now, they determine that they have to come in. The remediation plan that the developer puts forward would not be something less than the state would do on its own? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right.
So if they approve something that the developer is putting forward, that would be sufficient as far as DEC is concerned, that the state wouldn't do something above that?
Yeah, I think that's accurate, but with one caveat. Again, part of the remedy here has to do with the cap and the development itself. But, you know, there's, so absent that, and that's a big, that's a big difference, I think, between the two. But, you know, in general, the concepts are the same. They're going to look at exposure, they're going to look at amount of contamination and where it is, and then make, you know, good choices with known technologies, known types of remedies that have worked at many places.
Before you go, I have a couple of questions about groundwater. You said groundwater is at 20 feet?
Yeah, more or less. That fluctuates seasonally a little bit.
How far, how far does it go down?
Groundwater, the static water level of groundwater would start 20 feet below ground.
And?
And that's it. It, it will keep going. It will go into the bedrock. There are many different, what are called aquifer systems, where groundwater flow could change quite a bit the deeper and deeper you go. And you're talking about hundreds of feet sometimes. We're really interested here, you know, for this, what I'll call overburdened groundwater, where the, where the marble or the competent rock was dug out. That groundwater has sought its own level there with that.
Do we know what elevation that's at?
That's at about 20 feet below grade.
Even in that area?
Yeah, yeah. Only here. I mean, if you go off where the quarry was, you're going to hit rock sooner, obviously, right? Where there wasn't a quarry. And then the groundwater flow would, would need to be determined, determined exactly, you know, based on where you're, where you're interested in, whether it's downgrading or upgrading, it could change a little bit. So we're, we're interested here in this overburdened groundwater, which is about 20 feet below the ground surface, more or less.
Right. Early in your presentation, you mentioned that the protocols for cleaning up this site was based on commercial development, correct?
Yes.
And then you made a reference that if there was going to be a daycare center there. Am I to believe that the protocols would then become more stringent?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. If, if we're looking at soil.
Now, excuse me, but now why would that be? Is that because there would be more human contact with the surface, with the area versus the hotel?
Yeah, if I, if I could explain, in 2006, the, the New York State DEC in conjunction with the Health Department, put out a set of what are called soil cleanup objectives as part of the Brownfields program to really jumpstart what we're talking about tonight. Depending on the use of, of a piece of land and if there's soil contamination, the safe numbers or the screening levels, the soil cleanup objectives would vary. So the idea about single-family residents at a building, well, for all those constituents, all those chemicals, the safe numbers are calculated based on adults and children. They'll be based on ingesting soil, you know, over the course of 30 years. They'd look at body weights of children and adults. They'd look at 350 days per year of exposure. And that would be a residential type of standard. There's also a column and a new set of numbers for commercial use. In general, that looks at adults only, more occupational type settings. There's another one for industrial that will look for adults. And there's other ones as well, ecological resources, for example, for areas where, you know, that are more rural in nature. So there's many of these different columns. And if you looked up one constituent like barium or arsenic, you'd go over to the commercial column and pick up that number. And those 13 hotspots were based on the exceedances of that commercial column of those values. So, yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of risk assessment and toxicology built in to those values. They depend on the land use and they would be, they would be slightly different. And quite frankly, I don't know if all sites are accepted into a Brownfields program if you're looking at single-family residential. That's something that the state might say, you know, we feel better, you know, taking a harder look at it. But the commercial standards are a little bit different. They're a little bit less restrictive, but certainly protective for that end use and for that zoning, including a hotel, by the way.
Thank you. And I guess, I think Mayor Eklund asked this question, and I'm sure, trustee Giordano, I just want to ask this again because I want this, I want this message, I want to understand the message and I want the residents to understand this message. So my question is, is the site better? Will the site environmentally be better once it's developed as opposed to being undeveloped?
I think if you look now. I think if you look now at the site versus what's proposed in the remedy, and again, what's being proposed might become more intensive based on the DEC's comments. I think the site definitely gets better. Um, hard surfaces, which mean less, less infiltration of rain and snowmelt through that soil, removing soil hotspots, the highest levels of soil down to about fifteen feet in some areas. I wanna make that clear, too. Um, the, the remedy will not remove every bit of soil in this former quarry. That's not how the Brownfields program works. The remedial work plan looks at that scenario, and I could tell you it would be upwards of forty or fifty million dollars to do that. And look at Westchester with the thirty active Brownfield sites, that's just not attainable, um, you know, realistically. The, I think the program would fold up. Who would wanna enter in if, if, if they were forced to do so- something like that? But the controls are real, it's all about eliminating exposure, and importantly, it's about monitoring that going forward. So, taking out soil, having an engineered capping system over it, less infiltration downward, the DEC and the DOH monitoring the site into perpetuity, vapor controls, institutional controls, deed restriction, environmental easement, I think that all carries weight.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very positive things long-term. Thank you. So, yeah, if you'd just hang out with us for a minute, thank you. That's gonna bring us to our department, departmental reports to the board. And, uh, Chief Costanzo has nothing for us tonight. Frank gave a great report tonight. Um, I'm going to see his, Mr. Galuzzi has something he'd like to talk to us about, from our recreation department.
Thank you. Good evening, Board, Mayor. Uh, just a few thank yous regarding the, uh, Easter egg hunt. A lot of people came out and put forth immense effort to get that off the ground. As you know, it was a new location, uh, the last couple of years. Uh, last year presented our first change in the location at Parkway Oval Field. Um, and, uh, this year, three times the amount of people showed up. So, uh, it was a great success due to the fact that a lot of people came together to help get it done. Um, just to thank the General Russo Pope Foundation once again for providing the, uh, Easter eggs. Um, ten thousand eggs again this year. Uh, we may need to provide more for next year, but I'll talk to David about that. Um, thank you Mayor Eklund for supplying the golden egg. Um, as you know, that, uh, the mayor, uh, donates a golden egg each year, and whoever finds it, uh, receives a, a good, uh, reward, I should say. You wanna elaborate on that?
Because I'm curious, have you heard, did anybody call you up and say, "Hey, I have that egg"?
We're still waiting for that call, I, I talk...
What Johnny's talking, what Mr. Galuzzi's talking about is, "I took a hundred dollar bill and I put it inside one of the eggs just before we did the countdown." And I, you know, explained that a couple of times. And then we did our countdown, and a million kids ran out and grabbed eggs. So I'm thinking about this afterwards, and I'm saying, okay, so how many of these little kids are going home with about twenty eggs? And they set them on, on their kitchen table, and they're opening them up, and they're pulling out what was inside the eggs. And they left half of them in there, and maybe the parents or the brother, older brother or sister. "Ah, throw those things in the garbage." So, I'm kinda curious if anybody found that egg. Um, just would like to know that somebody got it. Hopefully, what somebody could really use it to.
Indeed, it's a good thing we're bringing it to everybody's attention out there. If you're watching and you have children and you know they were a part of the egg hunt, you know, maybe open the eggs, or crack them, open the eggs, because you could get a, uh...
Could have a hundred dollar...
Well, I have, I have a clue, it was a pink egg.
It was, that's right. Yep, it wasn't golden, it was pink.
It was pink. Okay, uh, and moving on, I'd like to, uh, send a very special thank you out to George Albano, principal of the Cottle School, along with Roberta Martin, who does the Cottle website. He, uh, Antonette Martino also, they were all instrumental in sending out the flyer to alert the, uh, children at the schools. Uh, a big thank you to Sally Veltiti, superintendent of Parks and Recreation, and also the town of Eastchester, making sure Parkway Oval was available and, and clean that day. Uh, thank you Joe Luciano, Pat Anetta, Matt Forgeoni and their crews for, uh, putting forth, uh, a big effort to clean the field. Swirl and Joy, we had a, our, our first vendor down there for the Easter egg hunt over here in the village of Tocco. Thank you Chris, uh, who supplied coffee and muffins, and I thought that was a nice addition. Uh, she should see the, uh, Easter egg hunt is growing. Uh, it's gonna be a full-fledged event here soon. Our, our, uh, Tocco Department, uh, Public Works, Frank, what can you say about Frank? And Jimmy Gizzo, and, um, uh, Bringing Down Silvio, Silvio did a great job. Uh, he and I taped that field off, and, uh, but Silvio's always just on point with the effort he puts forth, so thank you, Silvio. The Tocco Police Department, uh, for monitoring the traffic and the extensive crowds this year. And, uh, they were on hand, always willing to, to put forth extra, extra effort to help, um, uh, with the public. So thank you, the, uh, TPD. Uh, Donald Crosby and, uh, our Easter bunny, Ginger Crosby. How can you not mention, uh, Ginger, she's out there, and Donald's out there. Joey Panico and the Boy Scouts Troop, uh, Three Five Three. The Girl Scouts, uh, Tocco Eastchester Troop, One Five Three Two. And, uh, a very special thank you to David Burke for supervising and moving everything forward. Um, he and I met several times on that with the field and the cleanliness and the, the crowd regulation. So thank you, David, for really pushing it forward there. The Easter egg hunt. Uh, Saturday, July twenty-third, it's coming up. Um, we started a new yoga program at the community center. It's, uh, called Yoga with Nikki. Uh, if you'd like more information on that, that's two-three-one-zero-two-two-nine. You could give me a call, I'll give you more details on our new yoga program. Also, uh, Saturday, July twenty-third, it's a big, uh, day at the community center. Uh, we have our second Young Adult Open Mic Night. Um, it's called a workshop, Young Open Mic Workshop, uh, where we not only present talent on stage, whether they come with a band, or they're dancing, or they're singing solo, or duet, but we also have, um, entertainers that have been in the business a long, long time, uh, such as myself there, and we're gonna be working with them to make sure, um, you know, to work on their stage presence, or, or, um, their, uh, their ability to project their voice and things of that sort. So, we've incorporated a workshop along with the, um, with the open mic. So I think that, that might work well and entice some kids to come down and, and join the fun. Over time, I'll also have, uh, special, uh, guest entertainers come down to give pointers to the, uh, to the kids as well, along with myself. But, so we wanna get a nice mix in there and a balance of, uh, male and female. Uh, our next major event that's coming up, of course, there'll be more detail down the line on it, but I just wanted to alert the public is our Tocco Fireworks, which will take place Saturday, July sixteenth, at Parkway Oval. Uh, the fireworks do start at nine-thirty by Grucci. So, um, that's all I have for you tonight, so thank you.
Well, thank you very much. It's always busy down there at the community center. Camille, anything from the clerk's office? Gary, anything to talk to us about tonight?
I found the golden egg.
Oh, yes.
In the bike, at the Crestwood Bike, Bike Shop.
Wonderful.
Still remember it like it was yesterday. But I think Deputy Mayor Giordano's gonna tell us how busy the boards are.
Okay, all right. In his report, good. Uh, David, anything? Okay, all right. Um, miscellaneous business, we have a budget work session this Saturday, April sixteenth, at eight-thirty in the morning. And we will have a special budget adoption meeting on Monday, April twenty-fifth. And that is gonna bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports. And we're gonna start with yours and my Deputy Mayor, Tom Giordano.
Thank you, Mayor Eklund. Um, as, as, uh, Mr. Gertson, our village attorney, references, the, the planning and zoning boards are both extremely busy. Between the two of them this month, I believe there are nineteen items on the agenda. Usually, I read them out, and I think, uh, given the length of this meeting tonight, I'm going to, to spare our listeners that and direct them to the website where they can find the matters themselves. The next zoning board meeting is scheduled for April thirteenth, which is Wednesday evening at seven-thirty PM. And the work session is right beforehand at six PM. And the planning board meeting is on April nineteenth at seven-thirty PM. I would encourage our residents to pay attention, to tune into these matters and, uh, to these meetings, and perhaps even attend them, as there are a lot of, uh, important, I think, petitions before these boards at this time. That's all I have.
Interesting. Thank you. Trustee Luizy.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, last month I was remiss in not mentioning this in my report, so I would like to, um, apologize to the, um, members of the community. And what I'd like to, uh, and this was done without fanfare. Uh, remember a few months back, the incident that happened in Flint, Michigan with the drinking water? Uh, well, the Shiloh Baptist Church undertook a drive and donated three thousand cases of water and had them sent up to Flint, Michigan. And this was all done without any fanfare, there was nothing mentioned in the press or in the, uh, you know, and nothing was brought to, you know, m- my attention here in the village. And just in talking with the Reverend, um, a few weeks back, you know, we were just talking about general goings-on in the world, and he happened to mention, and I thought that was quite admirable. So, uh, congr- you know, I think we should tip our hat to the members of the Shiloh community for what they did. Um, and my regular reports are, I'm gonna begin with the Tuccahoe History Committee. They are now conducting a monthly meeting with other historians here in the Lower Westchester Valley. Uh, I guess they're, they're sharing ideas on how to expand the program and to get more people involved in not only Tuccahoe's history, but, uh, they're sharing ideas to expand, uh, the, their committees in, in neighboring municipalities. The committee is also now underway to commemorate the one-hundredth anniversary of our, of the United States entry into World War I. They came across this incredible, um, piece of, I, I wanna call it an artifact that was going to be thrown out. And it, it's a notebook that contains many original pieces of newspaper clippings and postcards detailing World War I. It's here on display for anyone to look at. Um, and the history committee is also researching more information about the Hodgman Rubber Company and the part that they played in World War I. If anyone is interested in joining the Tuccahoe History Committee, there are applications available on our website. And as always, they meet here on the second floor here in Village Hall every Wednesday from nine AM to twelve PM. Briefly, the Tuccahoe seniors, um, more than happy that winter is behind them and are very much looking forward to the spring. On Thursday, April twenty-first, they will be having a Italian luncheon. That is one of their, um, big affairs of, that they're trying to get me to go to, uh, that day, but I have to watch my weight, we'll see. And then finally, at the end of the month, on Thursday, April twenty-eighth, they will be attending the Man of La Mancha at the Westchester Broadway Theater. They have some really fantastic events taking place in May. And I'm gonna mention them now because it's going to be, uh, some of them will occur prior to our May meeting. As you heard, we passed a resolution for, um, the use of the trolley, and that's when the seniors will be attending the Cottle School Spring Concert. And, um, lastly, they are, will be touring the Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania Dutch comp- country in May. Uh, they're gonna be touring around the Amish country, and of course, be stopping by an Amish bakery and a Kitchen Kettle Village. That's all I have today, Mayor.
Well, thank you. Why no grass grows under their shoes, no moss on their shoes?
No.
Uh, trustee Leo.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Chamber of Commons will have a lobster dinner event at Broken Bow Brewery on May ninth. Uh, lobster and clam bake will be prepared by Captain John from Maine. Tickets are fifty-five dollars. Uh, the library, again, is very active, and I encourage everyone to attend these programs. On April tenth, uh, I'm sorry, on April thirteenth at six-thirty PM, meet author Linda Cardillo. She'll be, uh, discussing her new book, The Uneven Road, and she'll also be signing the book. Uh, there's a creative, uh, writing workshop on Monday, April eighteenth, from one to two PM. Uh, please call to register at the Tuccahoe Library if you wish to attend. Uh, Memoir Gathering, uh, Each Life is Worth Telling, uh, which will take place on Saturday, April twenty-third, two thousand sixteen, at, uh, from eleven AM to one PM. Uh, you'll need to call the Tuccahoe, uh, Public Library to register. Adult Coloring at the Tuccahoe Library, it continues, and it's the last Wednesday of each month at eleven AM. And then Celebrate National Library Week, uh, the Storytime with Miss Ellen and John and Matt and their guitars. And that takes place, uh, Friday, April fifteenth at eleven AM. It's open to, uh, children of all ages, registration is required. Uh, Legos in the Library, Friday, April twenty-second at four PM, and it's open from, uh, the children from ages four to ten. Bicycle Safety Storytime, and it's presented by the Department of Public Works, Transportation and Traffic Safety. And that'll take place on April twenty-second at eleven AM. And it's open, uh, to children from ages two to six years old, registration is required. Uh, Espanol Storytime, uh, Come and Learn Spanish While Having Fun with Miss Smyrna, which takes place on, uh, Saturday, April twenty-third at eleven AM. It's open to, uh, children from ages birth to five years old, uh, registration is required. Uh, Join a Sing-Along with, uh, Miss Elaine, and that will take place on, uh, Saturday, April sixteenth at eleven AM. It's open to children from birth to six years old, registration, again, is required. Uh, Celebrate Japanese Children's Day, and that will take place on Friday, May sixth, starting at eleven-thirty AM. It's open to all children and families. And I believe, uh, that is it, Mayor.
Always busy there, too.
Yes.
Um, trustee Alfassi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to mention that the Beautification Committee, uh, is a committee that's very vital here to Tuccahoe. And they've, uh, recently become a five-oh-one-C-three, uh, so your donations will be tax deductible, should you choose to donate, and we're going to need some additional donations, because, uh, all of their funding, uh, comes from, uh, people, uh, from Tuccahoe and/or the community, um, David Pope. And, uh, some of the things that you take for granted are truly, uh, provided by the Tuccahoe Beautification Committee. The Hanging Flower Pots is one example, there are many others. Uh, so you'll be getting further reports from me on the Beautification Committee.
Well, thank you. Um, my report will be brief tonight. Um, it's been a, a busy week or two, actually, for myself. Yesterday, I was at attendance for an Eagle Scout, uh, project, which was held at the Tuccahoe Community Center. And one, uh, Eagle Scout, James Talata, actually built a beautiful display case. You'll see it when you get out of the TCC. And he dedicated it to our, uh, very own trustee Steve Quigley, who passed away last year. So, uh, Steve's widow and daughter were there, and it was a very nice ceremony. So, uh, great job, James, and, uh, very happy that he did that for our community and for the Quigleys. Uh, this past Thursday, our own county legislator and Tuccahoe's own Sheila Marcot was named Woman of the Year by the, uh, Eastchester Tuccahoe Chamber of Commerce, as well as Mickey Spillane's Restaurant was also recognized, so that was a great evening. Um, very well-deserving for Sheila. On Wednesday, uh, this past Wednesday, our county executive, Rob Astorino, formally recognized our Tuccahoe cheerleaders up at his office with a proclamation, a special photo opportunity with the county executive. Um, and that was in recognition of them winning their national title. Um, next Sunday, April seventeenth, this coming Sunday, Assemblywoman Amy Pollan, in honoring Women's History Month, is gonna recognize some very, very special Tuccahoe women. Um, I will be there along with, uh, Assemblywoman Sheila Marcot. And the, there are twelve very extraordinary women who are being honored. And, uh, the first is our former village clerk, Susan Chimera, our Tuccahoe resident, Fay Blazi, Alice White, Swadish Paknada, she's, uh, of course, our library director, Stephanie Rosnick, Nicole Pushkel, Jana Connybear, Karen Kelly, Claire Gorman, Patricia Morgan, Sheila Clark, and our very own Camille DeSaville. So, congratulations. And I'm very much looking forward to being there. That's gonna be on April seventeenth at the Top House, so, uh, looking forward to that. So with that, that's gonna give us our second opportunity to address the board on anything at all. So, would anybody like to come to the mic and give your name, your address, and the floor is yours?
Good evening, Mayor. Uh, Ladislaw Castellanos, fifty-six Jefferson Place. Um, you might recall I was here last year, uh, around July... here last year around July, with the problems that Jefferson Place is having with parking issues. Officially, Jefferson Place has become a parking lot. During the day, we get commuters, people that use the medical building, the quarry, the hair salon, et cetera. And just recently, construction workers from up the block. I believe last time, you had, Mayor, you had told me that the chief was away on vacation and he was going to look into it. But nothing ever came out of that. It has been, I guess, a cause and effect over the past years. New construction and development, you know, has brought in more people. And we're running out of space. There's alternate side of the street cleaning. Sometimes there's not even a spot to move the car. So the meters on Main Street are empty. So people rather park on Jefferson than on Main Street. You know, you could literally go see it and it's totally empty. So the four-hour rule that we have is not really working. I mean, you see how people, you know, they trick, you know? In the past, the police used to come and mark the tires. They haven't done that. But if they did, what they would do is essentially move the car maybe an inch or across the street and they get away with another four hours or another six. Currently, you can just go there and you see cars literally from 7:00 in the morning, they don't move till, you know, 7:00 PM. Because generally, I guess, they're either commuting, working, or leaving. In addition to that, the little things that that brings, loitering, a lot of cigarettes, people, you know, it's not their home, it's not where they live. So they don't really care for stuff like that, you know? I've been going out picking up cigarette butts. I mean, you can go in the back of, I guess, where the quarry is and you can literally see, you know, the cigarette butts and stuff. So if that's what they want to do, keep it over there. Don't bring that to Jefferson Place. With that said, I got a petition from the residents. And collectively, I mean, we all feel the same way. Basically, I'll read it to you. "We, the residents of Jefferson Place, demand that parking on Jefferson Place be changed to resident parking only. Pay parking for non-residents from 7:00 to 7:00, Monday to Friday. This will give us back our spaces which have been taken away and continue to be taken away on a daily basis by commuters, shoppers, store facility employers, and other So I guess I'll make this quick. What happens next?
Sure. Well, the first thing is, if you could give the petition to the court. And I'm going to ask our chief of police to come on up and talk. I know that, you know, of course, as you're aware, the reason why we have a four-hour or a two-hour, depends on certain other streets have a, an hourly restriction, is to your point exactly, to keep commuters off the street. So that's the, that's the crux of that. So you're making reference that you believe that commuters are parking there, but I'm thinking that they're not because if they were, they would be getting ticketed. But let's ask the chief. Let's, the chief can weigh in on this. He's been doing this a long time, so.
Thank you Mayor. Just to the gentleman's point, I actually had been talking with other residents of Jefferson Place just this past week, and the same complaints. We are, that street, as well as Washington Street, Midland Place and Union are being flooded with construction workers. And the problem with Jefferson Place with a four-hour limit is, is that whether it's a construction worker or a worker in the restaurant on Main Street or any of the businesses there, if they move their car at lunchtime, they're beating the four-hour regulation. And so to the gentleman's point, one of the things that the residents on Jefferson particularly could decide is maybe a two-hour restriction, which really, probably 90% of the residential streets that that, that have an overtime restriction, are two hours and not four hours. Much more effective, much easier to enforce, and much less subject to abuse by people who are still in the neighborhood and can move it every four hours. I don't believe there are many commuters parked on Jefferson Place, not to say that it never happens, but I could also say that there are literally hundreds of overtime parking restrictions issued on Jefferson Place each year. And I have the data to back it up. So it's not as though the street's not being enforced. However, four-hour restriction is very difficult to enforce. And if the residents choose to go to the two-hour restriction, I think that they would eliminate many of the problems that he has just said. Because again, construction workers, other workers in the neighborhood, dental offices, they move their car at lunchtime, they, they are, you know, meeting the, the threshold of the law to say they're not, you know, leaving their car more than, more than restriction. So to that point, we'd be more than happy to get some feedback from the residents and ask if that's the case. I also talked to, when I had my conversation with the residents earlier, it was that in the short term, if they wanted to waive the alternate side of street parking until at least that construction job is over, I think that would give them some tremendous relief. And I'm still waiting to hear back from, I talked to a couple and they were going to ask some of the neighbors. So maybe that message is making its way through the neighborhood. And if they get back to us and say, look, we want some relief, at least while the construction is going on, we'd be more than happy to accommodate that.
And then that just means that the streets repress and get there unless maybe he sees an opportunity, but it doesn't sound like he would ever do that.
Yeah, I mean, it's a balancing act for quality of life. If there's no parking, I think the residents would choose in the short term, you know, to sweep in between the cars themselves and then, you know, hopefully have some parking and make it much easier for their families and visitors, et cetera, to access their homes. To another problem that exists with this construction site, and again, talking to the Building Department, is that part of their site plan approval was to provide off-street parking. And they have not met that requirement. So we really need to, I think, crack down on that problem because that whole area is being inundated with construction workers.
Interesting. Okay. All right. I'm glad you brought it up. We didn't know that. So, okay, yeah, please.
I appreciate that, but I think it comes down to enforcement at the end, whether it's four hours or two hours. I haven't seen it. The residents in Jefferson Place haven't seen it. And, you know, literally cars just stay there. They just stay there. They don't move. Marking the tires hasn't happened for the past two years. So I don't know how they, how they measure the cars moving in and out. At the end of the day, if it does move to two-hour restriction, I would ask that it gets enforced, you know? Otherwise, we're at the same spot where we were, whether it's two-hour, four-hour. Nobody comes, nobody checks. And yes, there are, there are commuters because I commute every day. I take the train and I get off the train, they go, it's like they're coming home with me. They jump in their car and then they go. So.
Okay. I heard you. Thank you. I think the chief just wants to do a follow-up too. Thank you.
Just to follow up, again, for many, many years, we physically chalked the tire. And then that's how we would determine if that car was moved. We now, our handheld ticket writers do it electronically. There's a method there that we know, it doesn't physically have to be chalked. So if residents aren't seeing chalk marks, does not mean it's not being enforced. It is being enforced. And like I said, I'll even show the gentleman, there are hundreds of tickets on Jefferson Place alone written every single year.
Yeah, I haven't seen the chalker out in a lot of years, that's for sure. So with that, is there anybody else like to speak, to address the board?
Good evening. Ivy Norman from 38 Rogers Street in Tocco. First of all, I mainly came to hear about the 109 Marble Day Road project, the hotel project. And I'm understanding that regardless whether the hotel will be there or not, we're still going to probably have to have some kind of remedial work done. Is that correct? Because I know a lot of people being, the people at the Martha Art Place have been coming around Rogers Street and Marble Place, instigating the residents there to fight against it. Me, I don't have a problem with it, but I think it needs to be done. And I think the hotel will be beneficial. That being said, I also want to thank you all for having Greg as the senior citizen liaison. We bend, when he comes to visit us, we bend his ear. I mean, we really, we bend his ear. So he's a wonderful person and I'd like to compliment him for being such a wonderful liaison.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
He's like a teddy bear, right? Thank you. Very kind of you. Anybody else? Well, before we adjourn tonight, I just want to express on behalf of the entire board our sincerest condolences to our village attorney, Gary Gerson. His dad passed away this past Saturday. We just found out today. And so I want a close night with a moment of silence for Jerry Gerson. Amen. Rest in peace. If there's no other business tonight, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By the second.
Second.
Till next time, Tocco. Have a very good evening.